Five minutes, ten minutes, done.
Yeah, whatever.
Hold me there then.
Hold us to that. All right. Are we on here?
Are we on?
We're on, Trev. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome to the October 18th, 2018, meeting of the West Boylston Zoning Board of Appeals. Let's see. The first item on the agenda?
All are present except Mr. Osiani.
Yes. Thank you for that.
Would it be all right if we just go to the minutes?
Yeah, exactly. So we'll skip over the first thing.
Well, I'll make a motion. If we're gonna go to the minutes, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of 9/28/2018, unless somebody had some corrections. I didn't see any.
Is there a second?
I wasn't here.
Yeah, he wasn't.
Oh, second.
Are there any comments or amendments?
Nope.
Nothing?
I have nothing? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Toby, do you have a clean copy?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Would you?
Yeah, I will sign it.
Because, well, one of us can sign it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Osiani is not here yet.
Yep, yep.
One of us can sign it.
Did you want to sign it now or?
Yeah, I will sign it. Bring it down. Let's get it over with.
And sign it.
Thank you. I can agree this is small bunch.
I don't like the way they cannot have this.
Sure. Before we close out. That's okay. Yeah, 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 of course.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Toby.
Well done, Toby. All right, great. So let's move to our seven o'clock topic. I see Mr. Ali is here. Mr. Ali, feel free to come forward for us. Again, to our request for modification at 92 North Main. All right, so we did receive your updated set of plans for Building C that you sent to us after the last meeting. At least according to my count, that the rooms, the one bedrooms, the two bedrooms, and the one bedroom with dens did seem to make more sense to me.
Every floor is marked also at the same den.
Oh, perfect.
What's that?
Every floor, on every elevation, we have all the units marked and written.
Yep.
The board had asked me for a key plan.
Yes.
For Building A. So I got that one also.
Oh, great.
So that already was included. The key plan included here. This is the key plan. And we really see another plan here.
I see you remembered the most important thing today. Your glasses.
Yes. Last time I was embarrassed by it.
No, that's okay, hey.
And I was told to mention that the maintenance room and office.
Yes.
That was mentioned. Maintenance room and office.
Yep.
And Building A had gym and other stuff. It's all marked up.
Okay.
In this plan.
Okay.
So we have our office. Gym, yoga room, everything is marked.
Good.
The key plan.
Yep, so that's the key plans.
That's the key plan for Building A.
Yes, it is.
See where the, on level zero, we have a office, yoga room, gym, everything is marked.
To withdraw that. And we did post that.
And then there was, I remember also in the letter that we received from your attorney, there was also reference to, I think it was a landscape plan. I don't know if we
That the building inspector gave
I said everything what are
But we need to, well, it's a technicality, just to agree to the draw.
Toby, if we could sit down for a few minutes? So we could tell you clearly, you know, why and what. Since you came in here, if not, you know. David had a question about the affordable one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom.
Yes, yes.
And the one bedroom with a den.
Yeah, it's the same, one bedroom and one bedroom den will be same and affordable.
Same price?
Same price. Because one bedroom is considered as one bedroom.
But I did have, if it's okay with
Yes, it is, absolutely.
Okay, I did have a question, okay? You had filed let me see if I can find it now with the building department. This, this here.
This is the affordable one.
It gave a list of all the numbered all the apartments, what type of apartment it was, and, you know, whether it was affordable or not, the square footage and the rent. Okay. I noticed that one of the apartments, the first one that I saw was C-101, which is a one bedroom with a den now. Does that still have, it was originally supposed to be two bedrooms with two baths?
Yeah.
Does it still have two bathrooms?
It has two bathrooms. But it's considered as den.
Okay, I understand that. I understand. I just wanted to clarify. So the other ones, if they had if they were supposed to be a two bedrooms, but now there are one bedroom
Den.
With a den, they still have two bathrooms?
Some of them have one bathroom, some of them have two bathrooms.
Okay, all right. I mean, well, I'm just, you know, I just want to make sure. It just seems kind of, I mean, that's a great deal. I mean, one and, you know, a one bedroom with a den and have two bathrooms and still be the same price as a one a one bedroom, I think that's a great deal. But, you know, what do I know?
Did you sign in for us? Thank you.
Mr. Ali, just a quick, another quick question, okay? Sorry.
All right.
A one bedroom is 964 square feet, okay? What is the square footage of a one bedroom with a den? Is there much of a difference?
It's about 100 square feet difference.
So you're looking at about 1064? 1050, somewhere around there?
Plus or minus.
Okay. Okay. All right. So looking at this right here, and we all got a copy of this, okay? Even though the rent, okay, the square footage is different
Yes.
Between a one bedroom and a one bedroom with a den.
Yes.
Okay? Mr. Ali has stated that the rent is going to stay the same, okay? So I'm assuming that the minimum income limit would stay the same, too. So regardless of whether you're renting a one bedroom or one bedroom with a den, the rent will be, what it says here, 1164, and the minimum income limit would be 34, 920. Is that, am I, am I correct on that?
Yeah, but this board has nothing to do with the rent, right?
No, on the affordable cities.
On this, that's what I'm talking about.
Not for the market, right.
On the affordables. That's the only thing I'm talking about, is affordables.
And so just to confirm, what he said, that's your understanding as well?
My understanding is exactly, it is one bedroom, one bedroom den is considered as one bedroom.
Okay.
And the rent and affordability, minimum income limit has to be same.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure.
It's good to know.
I mean, I just wanted to clarify. Because I'm saying, thinking that if it's a one bedroom
Yeah.
With a den, and it's got two bathrooms
Yeah.
You know, whereas a one bedroom with, just a regular one bedroom and you, you know, at the same price. Me personally, I'd be going after the one bedroom with a den.
First come, first served.
You know, I know. How close, Mr. Ali, how close are we to, I know, I think at the last meeting you said something about December is when the rent, when the, what you call it, the leases expire? Okay? So are we pretty close to establishing our first one bedroom with a den affordable?
Very soon. Actually, one of the Building C one bedroom apartment tenant wants to move into 215 I was talking to you about last time.
Yes.
He, she is moving into 215.
Okay.
And we had to just look for another one, which is getting vacated end of December, and then we are going to turn that thing as an affordable unit, it will be a two bedroom.
Okay. So if I understand this correctly, we will now have five one bedroom, no den, nine one bedroom with a den, and 28 two bedrooms in Building C.
So all written down.
Okay. I'm just, just clarifying so that people that are listening
I'll tell you.
I think it's 24 two bedrooms, isn't it?
On the basement level, we have three one bedrooms, which has one den.
Yeah.
And on this first floor, we have eight one bedrooms, in which we have one, two, three, four, five, six dens. And on the third floor, we have three one bedrooms, in which one, two one bedroom dens are there.
Okay, so that makes five, nine
Total of 38 units.
Yep, so five, nine, and 24.
Yeah.
Okay.
On page five. Partnership permit?
Yes.
It is listed in the table.
Okay. Yeah, because we got a new one.
It is.
We got the new one. Okay.
Is there one that I could have for the file?
What?
Was there, I mean, with the
You should have it. You did print it out.
Oh, there wasn't something new?
It was something you printed out for us.
You did print it out.
I've got an email version if you need it.
Oh, okay.
That's the one which attorneys had sent it.
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
So
Oh, another thing. Before I forget, David and the board was giving away off on that gate.
Yeah.
Excellent.
This is on the, going up the road, on the left-hand side.
Where the driveway was.
Okay. What about the, what about the back?
A house.
A house, okay. So there's a gate. All right. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any problems with this. I mean, we reached out to Mr. Ali. This is what I requested.
Yep.
And Mr. Ali has complied, you know, with the fence, and I
Thank you.
Unless somebody else on the board has any objections, I don't have any objections to this. I, you know, this is, I'm glad that we were able to get this.
Yes.
Actually, they finished up at five o'clock today.
The only other thing, too, is, has the fence been fixed around the retention pond on the backside where the tree fell on the fence? Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that that was
Everybody property takes care of the management part.
Okay. That's interesting. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that that was taken care of. Because that was another one of my calls.
You have other questions? You have other, or anybody?
Ali, anything?
Ali has nothing. Thank you, no. There are a couple of residents here from the 92 North.
Okay.
Well, if you want to hear them, you can ask. Not a public hearing, but you could ask.
You can ask.
Let me just see. I just want to make sure that I can make sense of everything that we have in front of us. All right, so this is the updated plan. We've got the ABC key plans now.
Which actually Toby emailed me today to get it.
Okay.
It was done anyhow, so I probably
Yeah, perfect.
And we're still at 100%? Rented?
Usually it's one apartment in and out.
Okay.
But in Building C, Building C and Building A is 100% till December, so in December we'll have things changing, because that's when we start leasing.
Now, that, I know we asked you to change the caretaker office to now it's office and maintenance, okay? Is there a possibility that somewhere down the line, that the management company may hire a a part-time, a full-time maintenance person?
Yes.
Okay. But that maintenance person will not live on station, correct?
I had to come back to the board. It's up to the board's decision, otherwise you have to stay outside.
Okay.
That's what we had discussed last time.
So there's 80 units, livable units, not 81.
No more than 81.
Right.
And we picked up one affordable, so now we have 21 instead of 20.
21 affordables.
Instead of 20.
Total.
Okay.
That's in the decision already, what the attorneys have drafted.
Right. Right, in the draft. That's correct.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if there's no other
Well, just a general question. In your view, how are things going up there? How are things, how do things look? Or how do you feel, you know, that the project is, it looks like
It was a very successful project.
Yep.
I was surprised. We started, within 12 months, we built the whole project, and in six months, we leased it.
Mm-hmm.
And we are almost 100%, plus or minus one, even when you have 80 units, people move out sometimes. People had to move or something, but it's been really surprising unit, because we are looking at other facilities where there were projects in Ooster and Shrewsbury. They started at the same time, they got occupancy at the same time, but they are not still up to the mark. It was pretty impressive. MHP was very concerned about the absorption rate, and the absorption rate was there.
Hmm.
Key thing is absorption. You had to have 90% plus for mass housing partnership to finance it.
Okay. And you're above that at this point?
I've been above that for six months.
Yeah, yeah.
So the last thing now is, is that once the board takes a vote, then this goes back to MHP for your financial stuff?
No, what it happens is now it will go back to MHP, and MHP will call in for an appraisal, then they'll come back and finance it.
Okay.
And then they'll put it on the regular affordable unit project.
Okay.
I, I don't understand these storage units. What are these storage units used for? What do you store it?
Apartment people, they don't have much storage in their apartments. If they have to put some winter stuff, or Christmas stuff, or any stuff, we like to put them in the storage.
And they have to pay rent for that?
Everything is
Included in the rent.
No, no.
Not the storage.
Not the storage. We have some storage units, which will be rented.
Oh, the rented
Usually that's a very good bargain for us right now, so what we do is, we'll tell it's $50 per storage, but since it's the first thing, we are just offering people as a package.
First month free.
Now, when you've got these storage units, if later on, you say no more storage, get your, get your stuff out, you could turn these into apartments, right?
You can put horses there.
Those are small ones.
They're small.
Four feet.
They look the same size as the other ones.
No, four feet by eight feet units those are.
I mean, it looks big on the plan, but it's only four feet by eight feet.
Yeah, but the whole unit is the same
That's okay. Some places we have sprinkler system, some times places we have some storage for maintenance people. And most of it is all storage.
But you never rent these out.
Eight by, eight by, eight, four by eight.
You cannot, cannot rent us an apartment.
You can't.
I have seen, I have seen similar storage places, similar storages in the other apartment complexes. So those are all like a, you know, pull-in, pull-out kind of a
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't have windows or anything there.
And I looked at it, and I say you could make, you could make those into one, two, three, four, five apartments.
You cannot put windows there. You cannot have windows. It's in the basement. And also, you know, people, when there is a tornado or something, they go to that place.
And in the, the letter that came, or the amended permit from town council, that we might approve tonight, that has 80 rental units. It doesn't allow you to go above that.
That's, that's in the project.
If I want to put more units, I'll come back to the board, board can approve it for that.
Good luck.
Any other questions?
No.
From the board? Nothing?
You entertain in the motion?
Before the, there is one resident, one or two residents are here. I don't know whether they are for 92 or not.
I don't know.
For 92, not Main Street or
Is there any, any public comments or, at this time?
You have anything to say on not Main Street?
No, no, if the board approves that, that's fine. Not much one person's gonna do.
Yeah. But I mean, if you have something, you know
If you have a question or
I have no questions.
Okay.
As long as I'm fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? 92 North Main?
That's the only thing, last thing we had was at Gates.
Yep.
The board had asked for it, I got it.
Okay.
So you want a motion?
So we want a, let's see, let's do this. Well, actually, I think it's on the agenda.
Are those, these plans goes into our ZBA updated reports?
Yes, and I'm
Do you record them in the
No, we don't record. That's all done, all the recording.
No, but the
Seal is there, I saw.
The permit has to be updated.
Yeah.
That has to be recorded, because it's 21 units.
That's what
That I had to record it.
So that Registry updates, right?
21 units has to be recorded as
Along with all the maps?
Maps. No, not maps, though. They don't need maps. All they need is the wording, saying that in Building C, we had this change, and Building A, we had this change.
Mm-hmm.
Once if they record these, big plans, if they cannot read it, they don't like to do it.
The one, I think, potential only change that I might see with this amended permit is that I would like it to cite this new, this, this key plan that you gave us.
Just play?
Just, just so that it's, I mean, that's not going to take any time at all, just to add in that, to add one more line in here. This was, I remember, town council had asked for this, and at the time, I didn't, I couldn't find it. Is it mentioned? I didn't see it.
How soon will we get an ASBelt?
I didn't see it.
Chair.
Yes.
This is not for the key plan, this is just for the amendment, for the permit.
Yes.
If we have the plans.
Yes.
That permit explains everything what it is.
Yeah.
We don't need to add anything else.
Yeah.
Because ZBA can have a record of it.
Yes. So I, so I think
You can put it here. Yes, number three.
Yeah. Because I did receive a question, because the request for modification, because it mentioned, where is it? I actually have it right here. From your attorney, it mentioned a copy of Building A, B, and C key plan, prepared by
Juror Dixon.
The company, yeah, exactly. She was asking for that. So I'll just have her
We had given it to her already, emailed it to her, but
Yeah, and I don't think she, for whatever reason, I don't think she had it. So this is
I have extracted it here.
No, but it was dated received in September. So they just forgot to update this date. This is the real one. This is the real one. This is the one that we got right before last month's meeting.
What does the permit say?
But I still
So here it says, you know, the final plans, reduce copies of the plans listed below shall be attached here to
Yep.
As recorded here with the exhibit 27.
Yep.
So what we can do is, you know, we can put one, one more line.
Yeah. Exactly. It's an easy fix. It's an easy fix.
Yeah.
But I think what we can do tonight
If you wanted it, we can approve it, and then, you know
I think we can approve it, we can sign this last page, and just have that one change made, and then get you the final copy after that. Does that work?
No problem.
I think that'll work. Then we'll have a record. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Rental is coming.
Okay, so we need a motion?
So we need a motion to approve the request for modification at 92 North Main.
The modification of the nine one bedroom
Yep.
Units to nine one bedroom with a den.
With, with this plan to be added, right?
Yep.
That, that's the motion.
Yes. So the motion would be to approve the conversion of nine one bedrooms to nine one bedroom with a den, and to have the Building A, B, C key plan added to the amended comprehensive permit. And that this is not considered a substantial change.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's my
Can I add it something?
Yep.
And total number of units will be 21 affordable.
Yes.
And the 21 units would be affordable.
Yep.
Fair enough. Is there a second?
Charlie. Second.
Second.
Okay.
Any further discussion from the board?
The only thing is, is that I'd like to know how soon we would have an ASBelt? And then I know that the other thing, the last thing that would be done, would be a cost certification. And I'd like to know, you know, have Mr. Ali present us with something about that.
Cost certification is almost done.
Okay.
It's with MHP
Okay.
For six months.
Okay.
But they don't want to act on it
Until this is done.
This one. My accountant has finished up everything, gave them all the final cost certification.
Because that cost certification will tell us if fees within the 20%.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But the ASBelt is, is the important thing.
Yep.
What type of ASBelt are we talking?
The ASBelt, to make sure that everything that was done, originally done, is done, the catch basins and all of that.
So you have done many ASBelts, right? That's all the ASBelt, ASBelt is ASBelt? The way you build the buildings, you promise to
Location of the building.
No, 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 no. You promised to build the building in certain way, but due to technical and your changes, you may modify the building.
Changes of the
Yeah, minor changes. So that's an ASBelt. You know it, and you're asking us?
There are plenty of ASBelts, right? People like inside ASBelts, outside ASBelts. That's why I wanted to confirm it.
What about the ASBelt?
Make sure that on the ASBelt, the catch basins are on there. Because it's similar to what, what happened at Alpha Terrace. They were concerned about the catch basin, so we need to make sure of that. And I believe he's gonna have to go to, to the conservation to get a certificate of compliance?
No, this doesn't prove conservation. You don't have any conservation.
All right. But we need an ASBelt.
Okay, we have a
Yep. So we have a motion, and we have a second.
Yep.
Second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You get that, Toby? All right, great. So does anybody have a clean copy?
No, I don't even have a copy of that.
No?
No.
I thought you did.
I think it's in the email, the last page.
No, you can take this.
Because I've got the last page here that we can sign.
Mine is a clean copy.
And then, so what I'll do is
I didn't write on anything.
I will scan this to outside council, just so she'll have it, can update this, and then, I imagine she should be, she could be able to get this out tomorrow.
And can you
Or by, you know, certainly next week, I would think.
Can you make sure that when that is updated
You want me to send it to Toby?
That'd be perfect. Even easier.
Toby, you have a better plan.
Once that is updated, and everything is kosher
Yes.
I'd like to make sure that everybody
Yep, absolutely.
What, now what was that?
It's a plan, key plan, which we had to send it to
Toby, we can give you a hard copy.
Is that A?
It's A, B, and C.
It's the key.
It's all three of them.
All of it, okay. All right.
And that's, because Actually, when you get that, send it to me, and then we can send it to town council. Have her make that one change, and then we're done.
All right.
All right, so let's just follow where you want to put
But do you have an extra key plan for me to put in here?
Yes, yes. She, yeah, he brought at least five or six of them.
I've got a vote sheet, too. Oh, great, thank you.
You need two copies to be signed, right?
Is that right?
Is it today's date?
Today's ten eighteen, twenty eighteen.
Do we date today?
Let's see.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of that? A second copy?
Cause one, original, Toby keeps it and another one goes to...
I don't know, Toby, yeah. Cause I didn't watch them.
I didn't get a copy, so I don't know. Here it is. Okay, I didn't get a copy.
It's in the bundle. Toby gave it to you.
We've got a second, second one right here.
Thank you.
Can you put the date in? Perfect, thank you. There you go. You, you need a pen?
No.
You probably remember John Hancock, don't you?
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Couple more.
One more sign. Is there another sign?
Yeah. So we'll just have to try and make sure that the lines on this last page don't get changed too much.
Okay, there you go.
Alright. Alright, so Toby...
And where is, and where is this gonna go? The addition to this?
This amend, amendment?
You said you're gonna have town council put it on what page?
Uh, I think it's, it's gonna go in that table. Likely right here, I think.
So that'll be...
Yes, one, one, three.
It might be on top, and then this stuff gets pushed down or something.
Okay, whatever.
Cause these look more recent. But, yeah, that's, that's where it's gonna go.
Okay.
Alright, so Toby, here, we've got the two signed, we can talk about how to work through that after. Um, alright, anything else from Mr. Ali?
Nope.
I think, do you have any questions?
No.
Well, it's been a long fourteen years.
Not for me.
Not for you, but it's been a long fourteen years and this project is finally...
Long, four years.
Done with and...
Every month I was here.
I don't think it's all done.
Oh, it's young.
If Raj wants me back, I'll come back.
It's not all done.
I can come for every meeting, actually, I'm so used to it now.
Thank you, bud. And I'll see you next Thursday.
Aye.
Alright, so we will, we will, one of us will be in touch with, you know, all this finalized and...
Toby, just get back.
Perfect, perfect.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, so next on the agenda, uh, we did have a, uh, request for a public hearing on a petition for an administrative appeal at fifty-seven Goodell Street. Earlier this week, that petition was withdrawn by the petitioner. Um, so we will not obviously be having a public hearing anymore. Um, I think what's before the board now is whether we want to accept withdrawal of that petition with or without prejudice.
I move that we accept.
One second. Are you here for the fifty-seven?
I'm in a butter.
Yeah, okay.
Of Mr. Gabriel, I just want to...
So, can I?
Absolutely.
I live at seventy-eight.
Agree. What happened from, uh, when, when they sent in the application to now, agreed. When they sent in the application to now, the, Mr. Justin Gabriel, he did go to the building inspector. He changed his plan. With that changed, modified plan, the building inspector, uh, looked at it and reviewed it, and he said, his, uh, decision is to approve the modified plan. It's not the original plan. So with that, uh, Mr. Justin Gabriel, through his attorneys, withdraw the petition. So we have no business in this, no business with the ZBA now.
Been resolved.
So the case is resolved and is, he is moving ahead with the building inspector's permit to build a garage over there with a modified plan. So if you want to know what's the modified plan, the building inspector has the pla- has all the details.
Not really. Just wanna know what was going on.
Yeah, so... He's, he's trying to build, build a garage there.
Right.
In his property.
Right. And, and the building inspector, at some point, or maybe, I think it was a different building inspector now...
There are, yeah, two building inspectors.
Had rejected his request as not conforming with zoning. And he's, that's why he originally filed with us. Exactly. And now he's since withdrawn that, um, and I guess he's changed his plans to something that apparently is now in compliance.
In compliance with our zoning bylaws.
According to the, the building inspector, so...
Explanation.
I wanna know something. What, he spent thousands of dollars leveling that land?
Yeah.
You know, and getting a foundation. Is that all gonna be wasted?
No, he got the permit. So the, if I have to elaborate a little bit, you know, he, he wanted a little bigger size. I'm not going into the dimensions, I'm not going to the, what is the really, the setbacks. He asked for a bigger dimensions, and the, the garage dimensions was bigger. And also the setbacks from the roadway or the property line is diff- it's different. The first building inspector looked at it and he is, he approved it. He's, in his interpretation, it was good. When we cha- when there is a change in the building inspector, the second building inspector came in and he looked at it, hey, there is something not right. So he, he, he denied the permit, revoked the permit. So now, the applicant, you know, he did go back and he revised his plan to comply with all the bylaws. So now, based on our new building inspector, the recent plan comply with the zonings.
So he's got the receipt to build...
So he can build something.
He can build it.
A smaller version of what he originally wanted to.
Oh. Jeez, that's, that's...
Yeah, anyway, you know, we, we have, I don't think so we can discuss here in the open meeting.
Oh, I see, okay.
So it's not before us, so we don't have to, we have...
Right.
Discuss on that.
Exactly.
That's why I'm giving a brief, uh, you know, outline.
Thank you. Yep, I think, I think that's, that's helpful.
So, yeah, the petition is not before us, so we cannot discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, so what we do have before us is how do we deal with this request for withdrawal?
Okay, I move that we accept, uh, Mr. Justin Gabriel's withdrawal of his petition for administrative appeal at fifty-seven Goodell Street, West Boylston, Mass. with, uh, no, um...
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I wanna know if he comes back with something, will he have to pay another fee?
So we, we can, that's something else that we can talk about, uh, because I don't think there's a yes or a no answer to that. I think it's up to the board. Um, but as to the, the motion that, that's currently on the table, we had a motion, we had a second. All in favor of saying we accept the withdrawal without prejudice?
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. It's four to zero, withdrawn without prejudice. Um, now, why don't we get to the issue, Charlie, that you raised about, about the fee, if, if he is to, were to refile again in the future for, for some reason. Toby, let me ask you a question. Did you tell me that there were two, um, checks that were signed because there was a, a confusion around the, the correct amount for the, filing the original petition?
I still only have the original check.
Okay.
Which was for...
For less than...
Three fifty. It was for the old amount.
Okay.
Um, he knew that there had to be an additional amount.
Yep.
But then, when there was this question about withdrawing it...
Yeah.
It's like, so now what do we do?
Okay. Now, let me ask you this, has he requested anything with regard to the, the fee that he did provide?
No, nobody has sent me.
Okay, so we don't have a request. I guess what's up, uh, for discussion for this board is, should we have a policy that covers this kind of a scenario where somebody pays for a public hearing and, but then before the public hearing, after it's been posted, but still before the public hearing, does a withdrawal? Should we keep that fee? Should we keep a portion of that fee?
If I have to say something, you know...
Should we return the entire fee?
I totally agree with you. If I have to say something.
Yes.
So we did all the work, right? As a board, we did a lot of work, as well as secretary time, that's a lot of work. Town time, town attorneys' times, we, we did, on this issue, we did...
Yeah.
Spend quite a bit of time.
Mm-hmm.
And also the withdrawal is not on the second day or third day of the application.
Right.
It's almost, uh, yesterday, you know?
It's Tuesday, yeah.
Tuesday, one day before the public hearing, it's withdrawal.
Right.
So I would say, you know, uh, with this case, yes, we should, we should keep the, uh, I think there should be a fee.
Okay. What I, my personal feelings is, is that we should keep something, like Raj said. I think that because the mon- the fee that the petitioner gives us pays for Toby's work...
Right.
And it also pays for the advertisement.
Yeah.
So I think that what we should do is wait for the bill to come in from the telegram, see what that is, and then take two hours of Toby's time, add those together, subtract it from the check that he gave us, and, and issue him the difference. That's, that would be my opinion.
Did we consult with any, with the town, town council?
Not, not on this, no. I, I don't think there's any rule.
Is there, Toby, is there any fee on this, you know, any other expenditure for this?
Um, it's really just the newspaper ad, and then I've probably put in, you know...
Whatever the time, you know, it doesn't matter, cause he says two hours. You make a, you know, whatever the time you put it in, you know, we can add on that time.
Maybe say like, three hours altogether.
Okay, yeah. I'll buy that.
I'm, I'm just trying to think because we went through a lot the last couple of days with this.
Yes, that's true. That's true.
Why don't you do the calculations? Why don't you, whatever the time you put it in, we should charge you.
And just wait for the telegram to send us, you know, what they're gonna charge us, and that should be part of it, and then her three hours, and then deduct that from the three fifty, and whatever the difference is. Because I don't think it's...
So normally, normally do we return the fee?
If nothing has been done.
If it was before publication?
Yeah, if, if, if nothing was put in the newspaper and we didn't have to do anything...
Is there any other thing happened like this?
No. Not that I know of, at least not since I've been on the board, you know? But I don't think that we just give back the whole check because, you know, we did, we did do some work, you know, and we had to post it in the newspaper.
Yeah.
You know, so I think...
No, not only posting it.
And I don't think, you know, I don't think that the petitioner, or at least I wouldn't think so...
It doesn't care.
That he would be objective to that. I mean, you know, you have to understand, when you do something, even if you withdraw, you know, or whatever, you still owe something.
Right, there's still some time that went into this.
Right.
If you request, then we can, you know, send the check.
Alright, well, so let's wait for that bill for the, the publication.
Okay.
You can take a closer look at your time over the last month, since it was filed, and then we'll, we'll take it from there.
So do we have to buy, return it, or he has to request it? If he didn't request?
Well, maybe, what, maybe, then maybe what we should do is have the chair, send him an email and tell him, set out the guidelines, and have him come back with, you know, what he feels.
It seems like, you know, he's not very responsive, right? In responding any of those. Right, Toby?
What's that?
He's not responding your calls or emails or anything.
I haven't talked to him at all. I've talked to the lawyer, but, um...
Well, then maybe you can, maybe you can reach out to the lawyer then.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get those two data points and we'll take it from there.
So am I, am I depositing this or not deposit? Cause I still have the check here.
I'd say hold on to it until we get all the information, before we do anything.
Yeah, let's hold on to it.
Oh, okay.
Let's hold on to it.
Okay.
Alright, um...
Almost done, John?
Almost, almost. Alright, miscellaneous mail.
That's all, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Good to see you, thank you.
Is this the time that we can talk about all of this stuff over here?
Uh, in this pile?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, there's two things that I have, okay? One of the, one of the, um, refu, one of the things that came from, there was two things that came from the building inspector. One was about two forty-nine West Boylston Street, which is the property that's directly across from Dunkin' Donuts and it's next to the Shell gas station, okay? He's looking for a variance for that one. The other one is a special permit that just came in yesterday, Toby? The one about the water tower? Or did that come in today? That came in today. What it is, is, um, the Town of Boylston has a water tower.
No, that didn't, um, we just got a, a thing from the building inspector.
But what I'm, I'm just gonna tell you, what I was told.
Yep.
Is that, because I talked to Cheryl and to the building inspector this morning, because I had a question about something else, and they told me about this, is that there's a water tower that belongs to the town of, of Town of Boylston, but it's on West Boylston's property.
Yes.
And what they wanna do is, they wanna tear down the old, uh, tank and they're gonna build a new one on the same location.
Yep.
But they, because it's on West Boylston's property, they have to come to the ZBA to get a...
What do they need from us?
A special permit.
But don't they already have one?
But it's, but it's...
Tank's already there?
But it's, they still need it because it's on our property.
Uh...
You said it's an existing water tank, why do we need...
All he said in the email was please advise.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a, I'm just trying to think through what kinda special permit do we have authority to give around water tanks?
Well, the, the one thing that, after I, I read this, and what I'm thinking is, is that, um, we should probably reach out to the West Boylston Water District and have a conversation with Mike Coveney to see, you know, what is going on. I mean, if this is something, like you said, if this is something that has been, um, been going on for a while, if that tank's been there for, you know, umptery umpty years?
Right.
Then it should be, it should probably be grandfathered, um...
Okay, the reason why, um, it would appear that the reason why they're tearing down the old one is because it's been there a long time and it needs to be replaced.
Yeah, and they wanna build a new one, so.
I'm not aware of any...
The thing is, you know, what they are, uh, when I reading this, you know, it's a steel water ta, storage tank with three hundred gallon capacity pre, capacity. So they want to change it to pre-stressed concrete water storage tank.
Yep.
That's a change they are going to make. So they also plan to...
I mean, I will, um, I'll maybe take a little bit closer look through the bylaws, see if there's anything in there. And then maybe Toby, after that, I can respond by email to the, uh, the building inspector's question.
Okay.
But, um, it's, it's a good point that you raise, we'll, we'll take a look, but off the top of my head, I'm not aware of, you know, a special use or, or something like that.
Well, it, it's kinda, it's, it's kinda odd to me because the zoning interpretation requests, you know, the bill, they usually go to the building inspector and he sends it, but if you look at this, he did nothing on, on his, you know, where he would normally make a comment.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if that's, you know, what, what that's all about, but, you know...
Is this a Chris Lund, was the building inspector?
No, this is, uh...
No? It looks like Chris Lund, no?
Yeah, Chris Lund did something originally.
Oh, no, 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 it's a, it's a Bentley.
Cause it just came through yesterday, an email.
Yeah, but it's Bentley, interpretation was by Bentley.
Okay, but the thing is, if you read the first one, it says, "The attached zoning interpretation request form for the Bo, for the Boylston Water District Water Storage Tank Replacement Project, we submitted to Chris Lund on September fourteen, two thousand and eighteen."
Agreed.
And they wanna know if it's been reviewed and what kind of a determination has been made.
See, this, this form?
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
And then it did go to Chris Lund, I guess.
But nothing was ever done, I mean, Chris Lund knew about this, but he didn't do anything cause he's no longer here. So obviously George didn't do anything because George told me today that he submitted this to us, so...
Well, he's asking the question.
Why he didn't make an interpretation?
I don't know, I didn't know he didn't do that.
I think because he's asking us.
Right.
Maybe just because he's just starting out, and that's fine, so...
Okay.
So I will, but I'll, I'll go through the bylaw and then...
So that's a homework for the chair, that's a homework for the chair.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Uh, I'll handle that, um, that's fine. Um, just looking through here.
Two forty-nine?
In two forty-nine West Boylston Street, a couple of years ago, there was a house on there, the guy tore the house down, it was a non-conforming lot. Because it was a non-conforming lot, had he built another house, he had two years to do something with the property. He didn't do it within two years, so now it's non-conforming and he can't basically do nothing with it. So now he wants to get a variance because he wants to put a multi-use building with, uh...
Well, we'll see, he hasn't filed anything yet with this board, has he?
No.
Right, so we'll, we'll, we'll see. And because it's a potential case that might come before us, I'd, I'd rather not talk about it.
Well, we, okay.
Does that work?
Well...
Just to be on the same side.
You can, we don't, we can just mention it, we don't have to make any decisions or anything, but be knowledgeable that, you know, that this may come forward. Because as you read this, you may have some questions.
Yep.
You know, that you might wanna reach out to the building inspector.
Again, that's a homework for the chair. I think it's a homework for the whole board, you know?
Fair enough.
Okay, the other two things that came from, uh, from Mr. Evangelista, um, I don't know if you were on the board or not, but, um, we approved a special permit for Lot Four over on Woodland Street, it was three lots, Lot Four, Five and Six. We approved a special permit for a frontage decrease in the frontage because it was like a long driveway.
By the triangle.
Yeah, and then there was the two acres of land in the back.
I was on the board.
Well, now, he wants to do construction on Five and Six, but he wants a variance because he wants to push the building way back.
Yep, so these are two new variance requests that we just received. And the public hearing will...
Those are gonna be on, Toby, which reminds me now, okay, this is the request, okay? So he's got everything that we need, alright? So has he, has he sent us a check for this?
Yeah, we've got the check, but that check also has the wrong amount on it, so...
It has the wrong?
I've got to, I've got to tell the, uh...
Is it wrong online? Is, is that where they're getting the wrong value from?
It can't be wrong online because we changed it.
In, in one place, in the main place, like where the fees are, the fees are correct. But then there's like this fine print on one of the forms, and that one still has the three fifty on there.
Alright, so we'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
Now Karen's not here, so I think I've gotta contact, um, that geek, um, group and see if they can change it.
G M Geeks.
Oh, okay, I think I, I've got the, uh, address downstairs too.
What is their name?
G M Geeks.
Oh, Geeks, okay, G M Geeks, that's similar to what, uh, Best Buy has, is the Geek Squad. Anyways...
Alright, fair enough.
Okay, I have, I have three things that I'd just like to...
Need to get the signature.
Yes, we will do that as soon as we're done here.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, one thing is, um, we're getting close to, um, next month.
Thanksgiving?
Well, that too, but first we gotta get past Halloween. Anyways, um, usually around the end of October, beginning of November, Nancy Lucia will send out an email to all the boards asking them for their two thousand and nineteen, dates, calendar dates, so that she can make, you know, make sure that the rooms are available. So I talked to Toby today and I asked her to, um, for the next meeting, for November meeting, is to, um, provide us with a calendar for two nineteen, twenty nineteen, and to make sure that there's no conflicts with Passover, Rosh Hashanah, or not, on Yom Kippur, her Jewish holidays, and if there is, then we can, as a board, we can work around it. We can approve that, and once we approve it, then we can send it off to Nancy and the town clerk, correct?
Uh, right.
The town clerk?
Yeah.
Okay, and to the internet, uh, the IT people, so that they can put it on the...
They should be posting there.
Okay. Alright, that's one thing. The other thing is, is about, uh, I noticed that the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, um, one of the things that they have on their agenda is citizens' comments. I don't know if the board wants to do that.
No, no.
Okay, that's fine, okay. And then I'd like to see, you know, uh, about future agendas, one of the things I'd like to see on our future agenda, and I know that we had discussed this a while back, and we were gonna do it and then we fell through the cracks, but we really need to revise our, our, our forms, okay?
Yeah.
The ZBA forms, and also too, I'd like to see if we can, we had someone that was gonna do it for us, um, take care of the forms and the, um, the comprehensive permit,
Yeah, when I left it with Anita, she said that I thought somebody was sorta handling that.
Right, but the board voted that they didn't wanna spend the money, but come to find out...
Toby, how many forms have there?
There's A, B, C, D, E, F, G, seven, okay? But the thing is, is that the town administrator has a budget line, it's called Technical Assist. And that's what that, there's five thousand dollars in there, and that's what that's for, is things like this that come up that we might need, that we don't have money in our budget, that they can take out of that. So that money would, that twenty-five hundred dollars would've came out of that budget, would've been no problem. When I was the chair, I had talked to Anita, we had contacted this individual, that's, this is what they came back, they said they'd take care of everything for us, okay? So I think that we really need to reach out also to, I know that Raj had done something like this for the planning board, and what he did was, is that the forms, their people, a petitioner was able to go in and put all the information they wanted, you know, they needed on the form, and then print out the form already, instead of printing it out and then have to fill it out manually.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see us do that. And now that there's an issue with the fees, which I don't understand why, because when I've looked on, on our website, it shows the correct fees, so I don't know where...
Why don't you, uh, why don't you talk to Toby? Find out where the other places is, maybe then we can send it to the geek.
Alright. Because I know, cause it's gonna be up to the chair, but if Toby's telling us that Mr. Evangelista, he has two, two different petitions.
Can you send that links to place link, copy the link and send it to us?
For, um...
The fees.
Where the fees are, you said they're in two different places, can you send that to us?
Oh, um, it's, it's on the web, the...
I know, can you copy that link? On the town webpage, on the top, you know, you can copy the link. So all we have to do is just, let me look at it, okay? Let me look at it, maybe that's my homework.
Because there, there's a separate section called fees.
Yeah.
Under our filings, and that's gotta correct. But then one of the forms, one of the individual forms has got in the small print, um, special permit, three hundred and fifty dollars, et cetera, et cetera, you know?
Yeah, it's right here, it's, it's right here, this, this form right here.
Oh.
That never got changed, and that's, we, we were supposed to change that, and for some reason we didn't, because we had variance, special permit, administrative appeal, accessory apartment, and then there was another one. There was one for occupation.
Yes, that's right.
So that they could, so they could do...
So do you have these forms in a Word file? You don't have it, right?
In Word?
Uh-huh.
I think they are.
Oh, they are Word files?
Because we have to change other things on...
Let me take a look at it, that's my homework, I will, I will take care of that.
Perfect, that sounds good.
I will take care of this before next meeting.
Alright, um, is there a motion?
Were you able, bills?
Bills, anything?
Oh, we do have budget things here. Is, is there anything in this, Toby, in this budget, um, report? That needs, uh, that is, let's see.
I'm thinking that what we really need to do is to see how much, how much money is left there for, for VHB for ninety-two North Main Street? How much money is left in that account?
I don't know if that's here or not.
It should be, it should be on the, the last page. That's for salaries, that's Toby's money.
Okay.
There it is, right here. What is it? Twenty, twelve thousand, twelve hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Okay.